Meeting call to order. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn is absent from tonight's meeting due to the recent passing of her brother. Our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family at this most difficult time. Mayor Moore?
Here.
And other people present in the meeting, we have City Manager Donna Viero, we have City Attorney Frederick Raffetto, and we have Michael Manzella, Deputy City Manager. We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag. United States of America. And to its republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, good, liberty, justice, law. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, The Star Ledger on January 7th, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to special events applications. Alicia.
I'm having a hard time on meeting her, sorry, one second.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right, sorry about that. The first application before you is from Asbury Fresh, and they are requesting to extend their open air market through the end of the year in Kennedy Park. The only date that is not available would be October 17th. Next is actually an event that already occurred, the Mask Up Asbury Park. And Little League would like to do another barbecue in Sunset Park on the 26th. The Asbury Park Concert Band, they too would like to extend their season to include September 25th in Bradley Park. Jersey Shore Rescue Mission would hold their annual coat giveaway on November 21st. Rise Up Community Event would be held on October 2nd in Springwood Park. The Mayor's Wellness Committee would have a mini health fair and walk in Kennedy Park on the 17th. And Cross and Orange would like to hold a ceremony in Kennedy Park on October 11th. Are there any questions on the applications? If not, thank you.
Thank you. No questions.
Okay, we are on to items to be presented, but we have Steve Heisman, the Executive Director of HABCor.
Hi, thank you so much for making time for us. We also have with me Sue Harbison. She is our, the Secretary of our Board and the past President, who's very involved with our volunteer efforts in our residential life programs. And also Marta Quinn, she's our Senior Director of Development. So just to give you a brief overview of HABCor, what we do is we provide permanent supportive and affordable housing to people experiencing homelessness and in danger of becoming homeless. Next slide. So who we serve. Basically, we're looking for individuals and families who are homeless or in danger of becoming homeless. We also have slots reserved for veterans. Many of our people have special needs and make it range from mental health abuse issue, mental health issues, substance abuse issues, domestic violence. They are all afforded some sort of rental subsidy and provided supportive services. And depending on the program that they're in, kind of depends on the services that they receive, whether it's our boarding homes, where there's 24-hour staff, or it's our Strengthening Families Program and our Supportive Employment Program. Next slide. So we were founded in 1988 by volunteers who worked at lunch break, and they noticed that many people who came in for meals did not have decent housing. So they decided to start an agency to help with that. Before the agency could launch, three of those people died on the streets of Red Bank that winter, and their names began with the letters H A and B. So the organization was named in their memory. They started with a five-person home, and now we're housing over 325 people in three different types of programs. We have our Class C Boarding Homes, our Independence Pathways Program, and our Rapidly Housing Program. Next slide. So the boarding homes. We have two of those. We have one in Asbury Park, the Laurel House that houses 30, and then we have one in Red Bank that houses 21. And with these, we have the 24-hour wake staff. We provide them with meals, laundry, services, medication monitoring. We provide a lot more structure than your traditional boarding home. I know that's, you know, doesn't conjure up great memories and make great ideas for a lot of people, but, you know, we try to have different expectations. There's a lot of rules that they have to follow. We expect that they do something constructive with their time. You know, they're not sleeping their day away or watching television. They need to either be going to work, be going to school, go into a day program, or volunteering. We also try to implement some behavior modification and induce progress rather than simply victim. We acknowledge the fact that if people are coming to live with us, they have some issues, and just because they walk in the door, they're not going to flip on a switch and be perfect. So we try to work with them. We also work with them in job acquisition skills, helping fill out applications, their resumes, interviewable thing. We have intensive screening process. We have a handbook which details all the different rules. And we go over them step by step to try and ensure that, you know, we have a good mix in the household. Next slide. So a quick video that I'm going to play. I don't think the sound is on.
Hold on one second, sorry. There we go. Can you hear that? Sorry.
Not really.
Can you turn it up?
And it was rough. I had nowhere to go. I had no place to live. HABCor took me in, and they're here to provide a support system for you, and that's what I need.
John is one of our more independent people living at the Coffee Residence. He's been there for a few years, and unless you're there in the evenings, you'll probably pretty rarely see him because he volunteers every day at the Riverview Medical Center.
There are programs that are provided every day for the residents. Because I volunteer, that's part of my program. The biggest part of this is that it provides a community for me, as well as a place to live, to interact with people. You'd be surprised how helpful that is, both mentally and physically. It's amazing how fortunate you are to have a place like this around, and there's not too many of them, and it's a shame.
Well, I was a foster kid when I was young, and I was missing my moms, and I left home, turned to drugs, and then I was just on the street, just running. I was in a shelter for a while. You get your blow-up bed, lay down, you go to sleep. You get up 5:00 in the morning and take all your stuff, and then carry your stuff throughout the whole day. And this was Monday through Sunday. Then they opened their doors, and I've been here ever since. I have my own bed, have my own dresser. I can take showers whenever I want to, and I could go to bed whenever I want to. I got freedom, freedom.
Willie is a gentleman who's been living in our Laurel House for quite a few years now, and he's, he's very special in that he really goes above and beyond to help us out. It's really nice to have somebody that, you know, lives there and is really invested in the well-being of the organization because he's appreciative of what we're doing for him.
I help out around the building. If it was painting, or putting up something, or planting something. I just like it, it keeps me out of a lot of trouble. I have an anger issue, which I have been working on since I've been here. And it's a good, good staff that, you know, you could go and talk to, you know, if you have a problem or you're going through anything.
I'm glad that I can help someone. I mean, we have people come that live in a house with different problems. Sometimes they come to me just by talking to them helps them. So that makes me feel good, you know, that they have a home, a decent meal to eat, somewhere to lay their head at at night.
I have a person in my room. His name is Tom, and he's nice. Ever since I've been here, they said that I made a big impression on him. He looked at me as an older brother. That was a, you know, eye-opening to me that I could help others, you know, like them helping me.
HABCor has actually provided myself and my son with our first home in over 10 years. We've been homeless for that long.
Ann is a single mom who became homeless after Sandy. She has a child with special needs. She's really bouncing around from, you know, place to place.
Living in and out of seaside, in and out of motels, year after year. It's not a good place to be with a child especially. A full kitchen, which is great. I can actually cook healthy meals right here on our very own stove. My son, for the first time in his life, has his own bedroom. He is the happiest I've seen him. He smiles when he gets up in the morning. To be honest, if I hadn't heard of HABCor or HABCor hadn't have gotten in touch with us, my son probably would be in foster care somewhere, and I honestly probably wouldn't be here today. So HABCor saved our lives, both of us. You want to try?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry about that. I muted myself to not have the echo, and then I couldn't get back in. So to overuse the cliches, it's about a hand up and not a handout. You know, we're teaching them to fish. You know, we're really trying to provide tools for success. And as I said, we're housing now over 325 people, including 70 families and 120 children. Next slide. So these are all the towns that we're in. In Monmouth County, we're in over half the municipalities. You know, and we're also in Ocean County, from Brick and Tom's ever all the way down to Little Egg Harbor. Next slide. Because Monmouth is such an affluent area, housing prices are very high. And the Out of Reach Study calls us that. To be able to afford a two-bedroom unit, a family needs to earn about $30 an hour. And this is a lot higher than the average wage of about $19 an hour and the $11 an hour minimum wage. So this means that someone needs to work 62 hours a week at the mean wage, or 108 hours per week at the minimum wage to be able to afford that apartment. Even if you fast forward a couple of years to when it finally becomes $15 an hour, it's still going to be half of what they need. And we also, we don't reward people for working enough, and they have an option to collect welfare and benefits for the children, and they don't want to risk losing them because it's such a complicated system to navigate. And, you know, we also really have no clue what the effects of the pandemic are going to be once the eviction moratorium is lifted. Next slide. So in our Independent Pathways Program, these families have special needs in their households in addition to being formerly homeless. We have slots reserved for veterans. And in addition to subsidizing the rent where they pay between 10 and 30% of their income, we'll pay utilities if they can't. We provide them with the supportive services to keep them safely housed. There's also the impact of homelessness on children, which you can see here. And so, you know, we've decided that we need to focus on a whole-family approach and, you know, not just a roof over their heads and, and work on their, their needs beyond. Next slide. So once we secure the housing, we focus on what else the family needs, not only to keep them stable in their housing, but to grow and become members of the community. They work with their case manager on individualized service plan and identify what they'd like to work on. That's gaining childcare and getting back to work, handling substance abuse or domestic violence issues, improving life skills. We just try to meet them where they're at and let them, you know, decide what is they need to work on and try and help them as best we can. The next slide. So our Strengthening Families Program provides even more intensive services that are focused on the whole family. And they're also working on healthy lifestyles, healthy meal planning, exercise regimens, and stress management. We work them on communication and parenting skills that the parents can learn to better communicate and can help their children learn and grow better. We teach them behavior modification strategies and reinforcement programs, which they can also apply towards the children's school situation and get them to improve school attendance and performance in their, in their behaviors at home. We provide them with links to counseling and tutoring. We help with financial literacy, budgeting, increasing savings, and reducing debt. We also provide them with financial incentives to, to reach the goals and with savings matches. We've helped with tuition, car repairs, childcare, and, and other needs that they might have to help better their situation. Next slide. So the other component to the program is Supportive Employment, and this goes beyond what I previously mentioned, in that we'll also provide assessments to help gauge their income needs and their skills and their interests. And then we'll open up dialogues with employers, not only to find a better pool of opportunities, but to help avoid job loss so we can have conversations before frustrations lead to the employee quitting or the supervisor firing somebody. Next slide. So we work with a lot of community partners. The VNA comes into our boarding homes on a regular basis. We work with CPC Behavioral Health, Behavioral Healthcare and the Mental Health Association. And we also have the center. We have a program with them also at the Laurel House. And so we're just, we try to avoid duplication of services, and so we work with the partners to have an effective treatment team for each program participant. Some things are better with just their case manager they built rapport with, and some are better with collaborative effort. The next slide. So as I mentioned before, we're not really sure what the true impact of COVID is going to be as far as evictions and homelessness. But we know it's definitely affecting people's mental health. There's more stress due to job loss, childcare loss, additional burden of helping the children learn remotely. I have one child and it's taxing. I can't imagine what it must be like to have three, four, or five kids all learning different things. There's less avenues for the children to socialize, the tension for parents escalates. So, you know, they're going to need a lot of support. We try to help in a couple of different ways. We've had a Crucial Needs Fund where we've helped families with the needs while they're, you know, waiting for the benefits to come. Mortgage and rental assistance, car and insurance payments, food and supplies. We also supplied all of our households with laptops and tablets with unlimited data service plans. And that way, they could still receive the support from their case managers, participate with telehealth with their doctors, and also be prepared for the children's remote learning. Next slide. So, you know, we believe in measurable objectives impacts. You know, we want to know that we're not just a band-aid and that families are going to be less reliant on the system and have more self-determination when they're with HABCor. We want them to grow and be good neighbors and assets to the community as, as we ourselves try to be. So, you know, we, we have benchmarks that we want to hit for how long they're remaining in permanent housing. Are they meeting the service plan goals? Are they increasing their income, getting a job, that sort of thing. Next slide. So as you can see, this is a chart that depicts our growth over the years. We're always looking to expand. We're actually having a ribbon cutting on our newest project in a couple of days at Red Bank. And we have a two-family in, in Red Bank where the town let us build four additional units onto the back of it. We also have been set aside a building at Fort Monmouth. So we're always looking to help in the, in the fight for affordable housing and supportive housing. And as I said, we're up to 70 families and 120 children after just starting to house families in 2013. Before that, it was all single, single adults. Next slide. We're always looking for volunteers. You know, this could be a bunch of different ways, you know, meal prep, landscaping, you know, recreational activities. We have a Residential Life Committee. It's made up of our board members and volunteers. And so we work in different areas. Some of them are recreational. They're just taking them to a ballgame or to the beach or to a play. Some of them are skill-building, where the volunteers will help with their computer skills or help with their budgeting or something along those lines. And also self-esteem building with like a day of beauty. They have makeovers, they go, they have haircut days at the, at the local salon. So, you know, we're always looking for those opportunities. And, and that's it. I'm certainly available to, to answer any questions. You know, you can also access our website at habcor.org or on Facebook. So you can, you can email me, but if you have any questions, I can, I can certainly answer them.
John Moore here. Steve, thank you very, very much for a great presentation, which we probably should have done years ago and probably should update every year. Can't thank you and your organization enough. And I have no questions, but any council members, any questions?
No, it's Eileen Chapman. I just want to say thank you so much. This was very impressive, and thank you for bringing this to us tonight.
Hi, Steve, it's Yvonne Clayton. And since our initial contact, I really thought it would be important for the council to hear what you've been doing and how you're doing it. So thank you for taking the time to make this presentation.
Thank you all for having us, I really appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you and your staff again. And again, it's important for the council, but it's important for the entire community. So I'm sure the public is totally impressed by it also. So again, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, we are now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Chapman?
Hi, everyone. So I'd like to just remind you that we are continuing to have free COVID testing at the Asbury Park Transportation Center. We are having testing on October 3rd from 9:00 to 12:00, and October 14th from 4:00 to 7:00. You do not have to be symptomatic, simply show up and have your test done. I had one done and had results back in about three days. I'd also like to remind you that we have free transportation for Asbury Park residents. Thanks to a grant from New Jersey Health Initiatives, we have transportation available to residents for grocery shopping and for medical appointments. And in order to make an appointment, you would call 201-939-4242. And one more thing, we are having a mask giveaway. So we've partnered with Twitter and have several locations where masks will be given out. We kicked it off in Springwood Park and gave out some masks there to residents. They'll also be available on the 25th at Comstock Court, Lumley Homes and Lincoln Village. Wednesday, 9:30 at Asbury Tower, Seaview Tower. And also Wednesday, September 10th at Fireman's Park on Main Street and Sunset Avenue. And any other information you can get from the city website. That's it for me, thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes, I'm back again, once, one more time to say that the census ends on 9:30. So that will be your last day. If you have not fulfilled your requirements, please do so. This is so very important for the amount, the amount of money that can come into the city and the services. You can take it online just by going to my2020census.gov, and it's in 13 languages. Or you can go on the phone. And again, go to 2020census.gov, and we'll give you a full list of the phone numbers and the languages that are available. Again, it ends 9:30, so we only have less than a week. And the Boys and Girls Club has a remote learning center. So for any parents or anyone that would like to provide a different academic support to their students, this is an opportunity. The centers provide technical support, and they help children with their schedules and to meet deadlines. So if you want more information, you can call 732-775-7862. That's it for me, thank you.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes. In my daily walk and ride around Asbury, mostly every day of the week, there's a couple of good things that I saw that was very impressive, and there was a couple of bad things that I want the council to really look into. One of the things I want to do is Sergeant Dello and his Special Police, I've noticed that a lot of the police officers are beginning to speak more to residents when they walk by, which is a good thing. And I also noticed that they're over at the park, the basketball courts, playing basketball with various kids. The kids seem that they was really enjoying the police officers. This is something that's been, that we miss, and it's good to see it happening. But they, the bad thing is this. As of our travel, I noticed that there's two places that I would like for the city to really look into. I think it's Bradley Code in Asbury Park. My Bradley Code, I forget the name of that place. It's right next to the police depot on Springwood Avenue in Asbury. And also on First Avenue. These places is outrageous for people to live, and I would like the city to really look into this. I think, excuse me? Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. The Del Monte, I believe is called, also the Bradley Sale Apartments houses on Springwood Avenue. I think the city really needs to take a good look at this and find out who's owning them and make these people come up the code. Thank you.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you. There's going to be a couple of things that I say every meeting, and I agree with Yvonne as far as the census. I agree with Eileen, and I would say, believe me, and I agree with the governor 100%. The only thing that seems to be working is masks. And as much as it's not a state law, I plead, I beg, I ask everybody to wear masks as much as they can in Asbury Park. And again, as Yvonne said...
And again, as Yvonne said, uh, one of the first meetings when COVID hit us, or when we thought we were getting, we're not out of the woods yet. And the governor said last Friday, there was a little bit of a spike in both Monmouth and Ocean County, uh, no idea why. But, uh, everybody just please be careful and please wear your mask. And then I have something new and I kind of made notes. I'm going to like, uh, all over the place, so I apologize. I've always considered myself like to be the easiest person in the city to get in contact with. I've given everyone my email address, my home address and both phone numbers. While City Hall is still closed due to COVID, I've asked the city manager if I could use the council chambers to, on Fridays from 2:00 to 4:00 PM in order to have a meet with the city residents with the mayor. So beginning on this Friday, 9:25, I would be available to meet with the public. I will meet with one person or group at a time with a 10-minute time limit, dealing with any subject regarding Asbury Park. The particulars have not really been worked out 100% yet because I'm springing this on Melody and Donna and everybody that is. As I'm saying it, uh, although I had previous conversations with them and I've been given the permission, but we have to follow COVID requirements. So, uh, I'm hoping by tomorrow afternoon, we'll be able to get something up on our website as far as all the particulars. Again, due to COVID requirements and contact tracing, appointments are going to have to be made and they will be made, sorry Melody, through the city clerk's office. And, uh, while this is being done quickly, so I appreciate everybody's, uh, give me a little bit of a slack. If, if there's a couple of mistakes, it's my fault for not putting more thought into this and doing, starting this like a week or so ago. But, uh, now that we can like open up the city wall a little bit for this, uh, I, I think it's necessary. And again, everybody out there, uh, John Moore, 1407 Fourth Avenue, 732-988-7915, cell phone number. John dot Moore at cityofasburypark.com. So besides this new initiative, you don't have to wait to Fridays to get in touch with me. And many people have during this, uh, seven-month crisis have reached out to me. I've met with many people, uh, be it at my house, be it at the parks or anything. And so that opportunity is still also available. And again, if people can't meet from, uh, 2:00 to 4:00 on a Friday, my front porch again, 1407 Fourth Avenue, uh, we can sit outside. I can meet you anywhere, anyplace. But, uh, again, this COVID without seeing people face to face is getting long and dreary and weary. So, uh, I'm starting this new initiative and I thank you all. And, uh, Donna, I thank you for giving me permission to use the council chambers. And, uh, Melody, I thank you and your staff for helping me make this happen. And, uh, at this point in time, that's all I have. Thank you.
On to matters from the city manager?
Uh, nothing at this time, Melody. Thank you.
Matters from the city attorney?
And nothing from me either, Melody. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we open the meeting up to the public participation, I believe Mayor Moore has an announcement, unless you've already done that.
No, I have another one. Thank you.
Okay.
Important at this point in time. And I, thank you. As mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park, we strongly supported the family of Hosseini Best in the request for the office of the Attorney General of New Jersey to release the audio and video collected from the investigation into his death on August 21st, 2020. We thanked the Attorney General's Office for releasing the video yesterday. As this is an ongoing investigation, the Attorney General's Office is not releasing any additional information. Therefore, we, the council and the city are also not able to commit, comment at this time. What we can say is that the Attorney General's Office is conducting an investigation pursuant to new state law done in 2019, which is intended to ensure that the investigation is done fully, fairly and independently of any potential bias. When the entire investigation is completed by the Attorney General's Office, the case will be presented to a grand jury as per state law. I just wanted to put that out there so the public knows. Council does appreciate the Attorney General for releasing the tape. The process is moving forward and we appreciate the Attorney General. He's the one who passed this law in 2019 that any shootings, dealing with police and civilians goes right to his office. And, uh, we appreciate the process and we have total faith in the process. Thank you.
We are now on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it Clayton.
Do I have a second?
Second Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. I will give you a warning when you reach one minute remaining. I am calling upon 3350. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ernest McNoly, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Department 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Like to start off by saying, city manager and the city attorney are denying the public's comments, complaints, emails, letters, phone calls. In particular, I've been speaking with several residents this week and we're all denied that information. The city manager made a statement months ago that she was going to unblock my emails. She was not going to continue in Michael Capibianco's vein of, uh, blocking me since he was himself basically fired. So now it turns out that I'm more honest, but now I'm still blocked because of Ms. Viero, who she herself refuses to reply to imminent danger matters of lots of residents. And we're recording her? She doesn't seem to care. She'll send an email once in a while. She'll get back to us. You have city employees threatening us getting caught on recordings with violence and she won't investigate it. And then she won't respond, but she will say the recordings exist. And the city attorney is worse. What do you expect from Ansel Grimarin after 30 years of creating what we have in Asbury Park? You know what? I don't know. I think Asbury should do what Long Branch did and fire Ansel Grimarin. For years, years of letting victims go unanswered, any representation and nothing but harassment from that law firm. Also, the last meeting, Mr. Kendall had the nerve to say to me, I'm a liar. And he wants the city manager and the city attorney to speak to false statements. Listen to me, Mr. Kendall. You were removed from the Asbury School System in the 90s for beating children and running fighting games. You lost your license. You appealed it. You went to trial in Trenton. It was revoked forever. And the judges said, you should not be allowed next to children. Now, worse than that, I gave all those copies to your mayor and council. And you're going to call me a liar in public? I don't think so, Mr. Kendall. And worse, you got an open charge from what I have in Oprah that you may have struck a kid in February in one of the schools. And it resulted in the Asbury High School principal getting fired. There was riots and guns there while you were hitting a kid with a clipboard and it's all covered up. So what do you have to say to that, Mr. Kendall? Okay, let me continue. Words bookstore, Mr. Analone, how come we can't trace and let the public know all the connections to Amy Quinn, to, uh, Clayton, to, uh, uh, Chapman? And everybody in there with a sex offender with little kids. And yeah, he was a personal coach. He raised money for Asbury together. He lived in Asbury for 10 years. He's an ex Catholic priest pedophile.
Time's up.
Thank you, Mr. McNoly. Next.
I am now calling upon 0033. Please state your name and address for the record. 0033. You might want to try stars. Okay, Arthur, we got you.
Okay, thanks. First, I want to thank whoever got the state to fix the, the, the road on Main Street from, uh, Asbury Avenue down to the Neptune border. I don't think I can afford another pair of, of shock absorbers. I'm glad that also that John and, and Yvonne brought up the census. You know how passionate I am about this. In fact, I'm in a meeting right before this with the governor and he just railed about it. But I'm sorry, you guys haven't done enough. We only have about eight or nine days left. I don't know what you could do now. But I mean, I've, I, I've gotten one email. I get all your emails for every committee meeting. And I've gotten one for the, for the census. And, you know, I kind of last time told you that you could, you know, you should put now, anything being moved out of, out of the town to the, uh, uh, at a city hall to the citizens. Your city manager should have gotten in contact with the, with the Spanish Heritage, um, uh, office on, on Seawall. You should have done a mailing. You should have put up, uh, um, lawn signs in Spanish to get these people to, 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 to register and they will, because I, I've been dealing with them. They'll register it when they understand, because they don't know what a census is. And if you talk to them about it, they'll give you everything you need. I don't know what you can do in the next eight days, but you just didn't do enough with this. And I hope we get at least 17, 18,000 people, uh, on here. And, um, another thing, um, we were in a little debate, the, the, us people running for office. And Yvonne brought up the supermarkets, the need of a supermarket or a food market on the, on the west side on Springwood Avenue around there. You need that. You have to have that. The, the, you build all these townhouses. There's no, no place for them to get food. I asked the cab driver what the cap fee was from, from Kula Cafe to ShopRite. $18 round trip. It's $6 to, to, to SuperX and $5 to a, to a laundromat.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. We, we have to get those kind of, of, of things, of, uh, commercial buildings in that section of town. Can't have people living there with no way to eat. Thanks a lot. Have a nice night.
Does that complete your comments, Arthur?
Yeah, yeah, late tonight.
Thank you.
Hey, Art, John Moore, and again, I thank you and I thank everybody working so hard for, uh, for the census. A couple of like small corrections. And I, I meant to email you on one of them where you said we should get in touch with the Spanish Heritage Society. That, that's been changed many years ago. It's T A R C. And Beatrice, who runs it, has been the lead on the census for the past 18 months. So we have been in contact with them. He gave us a good suggestion in the last meeting as far as putting it up on the electronic scoreboard on, uh, Main Street between Fifth and Sunset, which we did add. And as far as anything going out from the city manager, the council, everything, I believe the census has been involved. But again, I thank you very, very much for all the work you're doing. Okay, next.
I'm calling upon 5481. Please state your name and address for the record and star six to unmute yourself. Star six to unmute.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. You know, I've been very troubled. I, I was allowed to see this video that was released by the Attorney General yesterday. And I've had to live with it for the last two days. And we have, we have come to this council many times to ask for many things, dealing with the police, dealing with services, dealing with mental health issues. And it doesn't seem to work. And we've kindly got to this point where someone was, someone, some, someone was killed in this process because we as community could not stick together. When I was in high school, I learned that a chain is strong as its weakest link. And that means our most vulnerable need to be protected. And I do not feel this council has done everything it, it is needed to do to enforce that. I don't believe the police department has done everything it's needed to do to enforce that. I don't believe city services have, have done these things. And I don't know how, as to what we've seen from these videos being released that we show these things happening. We've known people have been kicked out because the city could not monitor its, its, its RCA program. We've seen, uh, murders. We, you know, we, we know these things are going on. People with mental health issues. And I, I don't know what else to do to get this council to come to the realization that there's a lot of work that needs to be done for the most vulnerable people in this community. I, I love open up parks. I love music venues, but we have to do the real work. And it needs to get done. And, you know, I, I, I'm this, I'm, I'm this very not happy. And like I said, I had to see this. People have to see this.
One minute remaining.
And, and we have, we have kids out on the street right now that now I'm afraid that we don't have the services and the ability to make sure these children are protected. So I don't know what else to do. I, I've, I've, I've said, I don't know how far we have to go, but we have to make changes. Thank you.
Does that complete your comments?
Yes.
Okay, Tracy, John Moore. I deeply thank you for your constructive criticism. And I agree with you on probably the majority of it. And you're absolutely right. And I, I deeply appreciate like you being one of the few people who've reached out to me in the last couple of days and kept me abreast of situations I didn't even not know of that going on in the state. So I, I know where your heart is. I know like all of our hearts are in Asbury Park and, uh, we, we, we will pick it up. And, uh, again, you've always, you and others have always been one of the first ones to say, hey, John, we got this. Hey, John, we got that. If I drop the ball, I'm going to pick up the ball from here on out. And again, I appreciate your concerns and, uh, your legitimate concerns. So thank you, Tracy.
I am. Just lost my box. Wait a minute. Oh. I am calling upon Nicole Harris. Please state your name and address for the record and star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. In November of 2018, I stood before this very same council crying and pleading with you to address the dangerous culture within our police department. A culture that I and my family have been subject to for years. During the last council meeting, you presented an equity committee. I believe this committee was created following a series of conversations Deputy Mayor Quinn and Councilwoman Clayton had, of which I participated in. In that discussion, a variety of subjects were discussed. And if a human rights commission or a human relations committee had developed, perhaps that would make sense. But an equity committee to address dangerous police culture makes no sense. What would make sense is if this council finally accepted the fact that this city needs a civilian review board and has needed it for years. When this council is right, I am one of the first people to celebrate you and say, you are right. You did a wonderful job. But when you are wrong, I will tell you, you're wrong. And on this, you are wrong. I asked myself, why does this council refuse to take immediate action when it comes to this matter? Why do they refuse to hold police in this city accountable for the wrong that they do? I could only come up with three reasons. Either you are not listening, you do not care, or you yourselves are afraid of the police. And if any of those are true, then you need not sit in the seats that you sit in. If you're not listening, listening, if you don't care, or if you yourself are afraid. In honor of the life of Hosseini Best, please pull out the last. In the honor of the life of Hosseini Best, please pull out the last proposal that was submitted to you for a civilian review board. It's not the only one. If you can't find the last one, find the one before that. If you can't find that one, find the one before that. Because time and time again, this community has submitted to you proposals for a civilian review board. And if it is not obvious by now, we needed it yesterday. We needed it years ago. Pull it out, put it into place immediately before someone else dies.
Does that complete your comments, Nicole?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nicole, John Moore, I thank you for your comments and they did not fall under hers. And, uh, we will move ahead together. Thank you.
I am calling upon Felicia Simmons. Please state your name and address for the record and I am calling upon Felicia Simmons. Please state your name and address for the record and star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Felicia Simmons, Soul Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Um, after listening to the people who came before me, most of what I was going to say has been said. But I'm, 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 I'm just going to say it again, what Nicole said, effort what Nicole said. Either you don't know or understand, you're afraid, or you don't care. Please do something, right? Do you see? You have a powerful, powerful position. You are elected by people and even the people who do, you still represent them. You're the representative of all people. And to say that this policing is an issue, see, I'm not like, I'm not going to say we need a citizen review board because they've been saying that for fifty years, fifty years. I grew up in the rubble and I've heard it my whole life. Fifty years they've been asking for. What I'm saying at this time is that they're not qualified to, to police us. We've had beatings of children. We've had beating of, of, of young men, of women, of, of all. We've had deaths. We've had, uh, just last week, someone called me talking about someone being snatched and dragged off their bike into the, the old village, the Asbury Park Village. We have young people who are scared. We have cops who have cursed me in the midst of doing community programming. I've, I've seen it and have been a victim of it my whole life. It is not cute. This isn't, this need coming up to say something in a moment. This is a lifetime of change and responsibility that you and me seek.
One minute remaining.
Felicia, are you there still? Do we, Felicia, do we still have you? I had appears we've lost Felicia.
Okay, Felicia's done.
It is, it, it's policy and it's care. I'm done.
Does that complete your comments?
I, I believe Felicia is done. Felicia, are you done?
I, yes, I believe she is also.
Okay, so Felicia, John Moore, uh, I appreciate your comments. Uh, the ones recently where you said you, you'd heard about stories about people being snatched and dragged off bicycles as far as cursing and everything. Please, if anybody sees any of that happening, i- if, if you don't have faith in the police department, call the city manager, call me immediately. And that would be investigated within a snap of a finger. And again, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your concerns throughout the years. And again, we'll get through this together. Thank you.
I am calling upon Darrell Stroud. Please state your name and address for the record and star six to unmute.
Darrell M. Stroud, seventy-four Wyndham Ridge Drive in Neptune, New Jersey. Uh, I just stopping by. Hello, Asbury Park. Um, stopping by to encourage Asbury Park to support a civilian review board and to work hard to install it. Um, it is election season and people are watching. And while some of us are, you know, running around having fundraisers with some of the same people that support some of these dangerous policies that are affecting black people, uh, we need to realize that there's still a part of Asbury Park that needs to be represented. Uh, the culture needs to be changed in the police department. It's not just change. It's not just training. It's to the point where people don't care. And when you can get away with things, you'll continue to do the same things. Uh, and the fact that we have to continue to have the same old conversations over and over again. I'm going to go with option B is that the fact that people just don't care. So, you know, whatever it is, whether you don't care, I, that's the perception is that you don't care. And, and people need change. People don't need lip service. People don't need five points on a walk card. When it's election time, people need real change, systematic change. In the police department and government, we need change. And I'll yield the rest of my time back to Reverend Wall, Reverend Harris, if she has anything else to add.
Does that complete your comments, sir? Sir, does that complete your comments?
Yes, okay, uh, Mr. Stroud's done. Mr. Stroud, I.
I, I couldn't argue. Yes, that, that completes my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stroud. And, uh, I appreciate your comments and they are not falling on deaf ears. Thank you.
I am calling upon five one two four. Please state your name and address for the record and star six to unmute. Five one two four. Star six to unmute. Your name and address for the record.
Hi, Rita Moreno. How are you? Um, I'd like to just change the subject for a minute. I was wondering how, uh, today I called up on the city to find out how we got the money for the masks that we gave out. They're kind of late in coming out. And then I found out that you had ordered them, uh, quite a while ago. How come we got all that money for, for the, I like to call it the Chinese virus? And how did we get that money and why is what I would like to know? Is it from the federal government or the state government? It's quite a bit of money. What was it? Over two hundred thousand dollars? And what are you going to do with that money? I mean, like, uh, you bought, bought five thousand dollars worth of masks already. What, uh, did they go up in price or how many did you get? And you bought hand sanitizers. It's kind of late for all of this. I mean, like, if you can use the money to serve the public in another way, it'd be good. And the other thing is, when you have people working for you like you do, I hate to give you a lecture, but you need it. You don't have two high-paid people giving out masks. You sort of go to the bottom of the list and maybe you could have hired the lady that's doing senior center to give out a mask. You don't take two of the high-priced employees that we have, and they deserve it, I guess. I don't know. But why would you have two people that make so much money giving out masks in City Hall? I just, I just couldn't see what that was all about. Not City Hall, in the park. And the other thing is, that sign in that Springwood Avenue Park, I called about it. I want to know if it's coming down. What's going on with that? That's a political sign. It shouldn't be.
One minute remaining.
That sign has to come down. So I want to know if there's any results. I emailed Fred and I hope Fred's listening. And I spoke to Donna about it and nothing has happened. Why is that sign in the park? One day it's uncovered. The next day when they were having something there, they covered it. I sent Fred the pictures and I think he has them. I mean, what's going on with that? You know, we're all Americans. I, I hope everybody knows that. And you shouldn't be putting up signs in parks. And the political sign should be nowhere near the park neither. All those political signs. We must be spending an awful lot of money to get all these signs up. And I just think it's wrong. And then the council's giving out the uh, masks for the general public and three of them are rotten.
Time's up.
Okay, Rita, John Moore, uh, the money is the C D B D money and the two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars was out of the Federal Cares Act that was given to, I mean, I say the state then to us, uh, and it, it was specifically meant for COVID. And it, I totally disagree with you where it's too late to buy masks. Nobody knows if there's going to be a second, third, or even a fourth round. So yes, and as far as five thousand dollars for masks, no, we spend a lot more than that because we're buying enough masks for everybody in the city of Asbury Park. Either, uh, three years old or eighty-three years old. So that's fifteen thousand people. And yes, they're a lot more than a dollar a piece. So I, I totally disagree with you on that. And I, I think they're needed as far as, uh, hand sanitizer, the same thing. We're trying to buy as much as possible. Again, God forbid there is another round. And we checked the shelf life. The shelf life is not something that's going to go too long. And I'm going to let Fred quickly address your concerns about that. Sign that you don't like, but, uh, go ahead, Fred. But it can be a short version. You can follow up tomorrow.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Rita, for your email of Monday regarding this matter, which included pictures. I appreciated that. Um, I've had the opportunity to address the issue with the governing body and city manager. And it is my understanding that the sign that's in Springwood Park was posted by our Department of Public Works at the direction of and with the approval of the governing body. You may know that, um, under the Asbury Park Sign Ordinance, signs posted on municipal property are not permitted without the consent of the governing body, but this one was done with the consent of the governing body. And the sign is not, was not posted in support of a particular organization or political ideology. Rather, it was a message and expression of solidarity, solidarity with the city's African-American community, essentially an acknowledgement of the black community and that they manner, matter. Uh, not, it was not posted in furtherance of a particular uh, political agenda or any particular organization. It, it was a sign posted in, in an attempt to show solidarity. And it's not unlike what you may have seen in many other municipalities nationwide where the words Black Lives Matter have been painted on roadways in New York City and Washington, D.C., and in many other locations nationwide. With that, I will indicate that I am going to send you a response in writing to your email. And again, I thank you.
Not seeing any, not seeing any more hands raised. A motion to close the meeting to the public.
Move it, Kendall.
All in favor?
All right.
None opposed? The meeting is now closed to the public. We will now move on to, I have the minutes, I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes of September ninth, the four P M. And I have the municipal council regular meeting minutes of September ninth, the six P M meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Uh, second, Chapman?
Yes.
I will now move on to roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Clayton? I will move to Councilmember Kendall. We'll come back to Councilmember Clayton.
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry. I was unable to unmute myself for the last twenty minutes. Um, yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to individual resolutions. We have Resolution twenty twenty two sixty-nine, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park regarding Veterans Relocation Project LLC and the parcel known as Block nine zero three, Lot nine in the city of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, New Jersey, commonly known as forty-five Borden Avenue in the star's redevelopment, redevelopment area, approving an escrow agreement by and between the city and Veterans Relocation Project LLC. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second, Chapman.
Are there any, uh, questions or comments before we move on to roll call?
Yes, it's more, uh, the one, two, the third, whereas down, the last sentence says, with two single-family homes for veterans or local families. And this resolution basically just sets up an escrow first to talk to this group. But again, I don't know who's going to be doing the negotiating. So I'm just sending a message just from John Moore. If this housing is not for veterans, I'm going to be totally against it. So don't negotiate something for, for other local families. It should be affordable housing. There was a good article in the paper a couple of days ago where Titten Falls is building veterans housing and how many homeless veterans are in the state, let alone Monmouth County. So I mean, I'm all for this and hopefully it will be affordable for veterans and maybe homeless veterans. But if it's going to be for other families, John Moore is going to be voting no down the road. So don't waste money talking to the developer about it. And again, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Uh, we will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty twenty two seventy-six, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Move, move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
We will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
We're on to Resolution twen, I'm sorry, we're on to Resolution twenty twenty two seventy-seven, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park, the county of Monmouth, the state of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the twenty twenty budget of the city of Asbury Park pursuant to N J S A forty A, colon four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, Cares Act, title Senior Center. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy, uh, Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution twenty twenty two seventy-eight, a resolution accepting an award of safe routes to the school grant and associate design assistance from N J D O T and author, and author, authorizing signatories. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty twenty two seventy-nine, a resolution authorizing Somerset County Cooperative Pricing System membership. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Move it. More.
Second, Clayton.
Second, Kendall.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to Resolution twenty twenty two eighty-one, a resolution authorizing a contract for the installation of glass at the new front reception desk area. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
We'll now move on to roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty twenty two eighty-two, a resolution authorizing a contract for the improvement of a tree canopy in Sunset Park in Saint Jean's, Saint John's Island. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it, more.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty twenty two eighty-three, a resolution authorizing a contract for the installation of an underground sprinkler system. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty two eighty-four, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a carbon scrubber motor controller for the sewer plant. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Kendall. Second, Kendall.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty twenty two eighty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to authorize payment to Monmouth County's Department of Community Development and Planning for Services rendered for the city's Community Block Grant Program. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
We'll now move on to roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty twenty We're on to Resolution 2020-286, a resolution approving the 2020 to 2021 liquor license renewals. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to Resolution 2020-287, which is a resolution approving a liquor license renewal with special conditions for Steinback Liquor License LLC, trading as the Ale House relating to license number 130333017-012 for the 2020-21 licensing term. Is there anyone representing the Ale House who would like to be heard? Not seeing anyone?
If so, please dial star nine or press the raise hand button.
Yes. Thank you Mike.
Move to the roll call. A motion is second, whatever.
Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Move it more. Second more.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-289, a resolution approving special events applications. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Okay, I have Councilmember Kendall with the move and Chapman with the second?
Yes.
We will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-291. This is a tongue twister. A resolution authorizing the purchase of personal protective masks with Community Development Block Grant CBDG funding through CDBGCV. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second Clayton.
We'll now move on to roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-292, a resolution for the reimbursement and payment to the Boys and Girls Club of Monmouth for the installation of a fire escape and hand railings purchased from Newman Iron Works. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Clayton.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are now on to a public hearing. We have a public hearing for the sewer connection rates. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it Kendall.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
The meeting is now open to the public. Uh, Fred, do you want to jump in here or you want me to do my star nine?
No, I, I'll jump in first before we invite public comment.
Okay.
Thank you Melody.
You're welcome.
Uh, this is Frederick Raffetto, city attorney from the law firm of Ansel, Grim and Aaron. Can I check to make sure that our auditor Dave Kaplan is on the line and unmuted?
Give me one second. Here we go. He should be unmuting now.
Hi, here I am.
Good day.
Okay, terrific. Uh, with me is Dave Kaplan from the firm of Wissin Company. Um, and with that, I'll start with the, uh, public hearing. This is a public hearing that is being conducted pursuant to NJSA 40A, Colon 26A-11 and City Code Section 18-5.6 concerning proposed amendments to the sewer rate schedule regarding sewer connection fees of the city of Asbury Park. I wish to note that adequate notice pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act and other applicable statutes has been given and that this hearing has been properly advertised as required by law. This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The city will present its witness to testify, who will be Mr. Kaplan, concerning the proposed sewer connection fee. After the witness testifies, any member of the public in attendance at this virtual meeting will have an opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Kaplan or to make a statement concerning the proposed increased sewer connection fees. After everyone has had a chance to comment, the public hearing will be formally closed and the city council will consider the proposed adjustments to the city's sewer connection fees. With that said, the city would like to call its auditor, David A. Kaplan, as its witness in this matter. Mr. Kaplan, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Will you please, uh, raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Kaplan, please state your name and position with the city of Asbury Park.
My name is A. Kaplan and I am the independent auditor for the city of Asbury Park.
How long have you held that position, Mr. Kaplan?
I've served as the city's independent auditor for the last 12 years.
Would you please state your experience and professional qualifications as an auditor?
Sure. I'm a certified public accountant, a registered municipal accountant and a public school accountant in the state of New Jersey. I'm a director with the firm Wissin Company, LLP. They're a certified public accounting firm located in Forum Park, New Jersey. I've been auditing New Jersey governmental entities and computing sewer connection fees for municipality authorities for over 30.
Based upon that background, the city finds Mr. Kaplan qualified to be an expert with regard to sewer connection fees and I would like to ask him the following questions. Mr. Kaplan, are you familiar with the finances of the city's sewer utility?
Yes, I am.
And are you familiar with the requirements for establishing sewer connection fees for a municipally-owned sewer utility?
Yes, I am. Under law, um, statute 40, 14B22, the charges of a municipally-owned sewer utility must allow the utility to recover all costs of operation, maintenance, administration, construction, debt service and all other, um, costs of the sewer utility and to establish a reserve is necessary for connection. And a portion of the fees that fund those charges are from connection.
Did you perform a study for the city of Asbury Park regarding the re-computation of the city's sewer connection fees?
Yes, I did.
Can you please describe your study and what conclusions were drawn from it?
Sure. So the sewer connection fee methodology used is the stipulation under this test. And it's basically a process. First step is to compute the capital base. And briefly, the capital base is, um, equal to all debt paid by the city towards the cost of constructing and improving the sewer system. In the city's case, um, that goes back to 1958. And adding to that, um, debt service paid is any capital cost for any improvements made to the sewer utility that were not funded by bond. Um, and using that formula, the capital base determined to be $39,585,37. So that forms the numerator of this equation. And the next step is to determine the, the number of service units. And that would, that's the denominator. The, um, service unit is a flow-based calculation which establishes gallons per day used by all customers um, and average daily single-family home use. The number of service units was determined to be 6,683 and dividing that number into the capital base yields the connection fee per service unit per residential customer of $5,904. Um, that number divided by the average daily use gives the connection fee per gallon per day, which is $31.98 per gallon per day. And that number is used to calculate the non-residential, uh, connection fee.
And Mr. Kaplan, how do the new proposed rates compare to the prior connection fees in the city of Asbury Park?
Well, it's been several years since they recomputed the connection fee, which was the subject of several audit recommendations. So I'm glad we're having this hearing tonight so the council can make, take action if they so desire. Given the time that elapsed, the connection fee that's proposed is $441, um, or about a percent higher than the previous. And the connection fee for non-residential commercial users, an increase of, uh, $3.31, or about 11%.
Mr. Kaplan, in your opinion, are the proposed sewer connection fee increases necessary?
Yes.
And in your opinion, are the proposed increases reasonable in amount?
Yes, they are.
And do you recommend to the council that they pass a resolution amending the city's sewer rate schedule to reflect the new connection fees in accordance with your report and testimony?
Yes, I do.
Mayor, I have no further questions of Mr. Kaplan. At this point, you can feel free to open up, uh, the public hearing to any members of the public who may wish to ask Mr. Kaplan any questions or to make a statement. If so, they should come forward and state their names and addresses prior to asking their questions or making their comments so that we can ensure an accurate record.
Thank you Fred.
Okay. Yep, thank you. And again, uh, so the questions or comments are just right on this resolution as far as the sewer rate schedule and that's it.
Correct.
Yes. Members of the, members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. And your comments must only be about the public hearing on the sewer connection rates. I am calling upon Danny. Please state your name and address for the record. Danny in star six to unmute yourself.
Um, I, I'm on my computer.
Okay.
So I will unmute myself.
You're, you're fine. You're unmuted sir.
Okay, I really, you know, I have a hard time just keeping my mouth shut. I hope the sewer rates are fine. I hope our sewer rates stay down, but if it helps with what's going on with the sewers in Asbury Park, I'm in favor of this very much. And to the lady that questioned the banner, just let it be known, I'm the guy that purchased the banner, okay? In solidarity for the city and what you said is the reason we have problems in this country. But I agree with the sewer thing. Thank you very much.
Danny, can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, so Dan Harris, 17 Ridge Avenue, Asbury Park.
Thank you.
Danny, in response to, in response to your comment, just for the public, for the public, this sewer connection fee increase does not affect the vast majority of the present rate payers in the city. The current rates for use of the sewer system are not changing. This sewer connection fee is only for new connectors into the system. So we definitely want to make that clear on the record.
Thank you Dave.
Yep.
Yes, thank, thank you Dave. That, that's got to be the key thing. So like, i- if it's John Moore, if it's Danny Harris, if it's, uh, whoever, this is not making your sewer tax go up whatsoever. This has nothing to do with the sewer tax. This is sewer connection fee for any new houses, any new redevelopment projects. And this helps us keep the sewer utility at self-liquidating. Okay?
Yes, yes.
Melody, next.
I am calling upon 3350. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ernest McNolli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Apartment 5, the Asbury Park, New Jersey. To Mr. Harris, Daniel, who broke the rules. You're supposed to be commenting on the sewer increase, not about your donations or mentioning that lady, who you very well know her name is.
Okay, and Mr. McNolli.
No, but, well, why did he get to say something?
That's why he was muted. So go ahead, you're on.
I didn't hear him muted, but anyway, let's keep going. So, so what you're saying is the, the increase is only on the new, let's say, high density and all the new homes that are being built. Anyone who's been hooked up, whether you're in a condo building or whether you're a homeowner or whatever you are, or a commercial user, there's no increases. New, new commercial, new residential, new condos, new whatever, is going to have a higher rate per connection.
Yes, that's correct.
And, and is that in perpetuity? Or does that mean for the first 120 days, then it applies to everyone?
No, it's only for new connections and it never applies to everyone.
Okay, all right. So then, uh, homeowners like myself can rest assured that what you're proposing and what they vote on, if they approve it, it's going to affect what you said, the new connections, which means buildings and homes, et cetera, and not the existing, and, and, and that's it, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, and, and now I think I have a question, but it may be a comment. Since you're looking at all the numbers and all the cost of sewage and I'm sure you're aware of the boom that's going on in Asbury with high-density building and tax abatements and pilot programs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, i- is there any implication that this rash of tax abatements, tax, uh, of forgiveness, tax pilot program, et cetera? Does it filter down to, does it filter down to sewer rates?
Hey, Mr. McNolli.
Does it filter down to sewer rates, Mr. Expert?
Mr. McNolli, Mr. McNolli, it's John Moore. The questions are on this resolution only.
Well, that's what I just said. Does it apply? Does it apply? I like to preface my question, if I may. I have to listen to you all. I have to listen to you all be verbose. It takes you 20 minutes to get to a question. I listen. So now I'm asking the expert. All these abatements and all these things.
Your question is out of order. Do you have a question about the resolution establishing a new sewer rate schedule for the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey?
Uh, Mr. Expert, does, are the rate increases even for the new people at all impacted, since you see all the finances, the tax base, et cetera, by, by the, uh, I don't know, the abundant new development?
This sewer connection fee is not impacted by anything but what I prefaced my remarks by, and that's the statutory formula, which is capital base divided by service unit. That's it.
Okay. And that analysis for the rates was done on the existing service that we have, the plant that we have, and probably the, what, the increased costs and maintenance that, that all this rash of development may impact? I mean, otherwise, if there wa, if there wasn't a boom going on in building, we'd probably be staying the same because we'd have the same connections, the same usage, and there'd be no need for an increase, correct?
No, that's not correct.
Oh, so it's just inflation, the cost of maintenance?
Well, debt service that the city pays back, that's what's driving the increase. So as debt service is paid back to, for the improvements that the city made to the plant and the collection system, as that debt service is paid back, that derives the increase in the connection fee.
Okay, and one last question. I, you've been around 15 years, you said, and relative to the rates, et cetera. You know we follow statements that you make and the city attorneys make and the council make relative to, we're going to give the sewer up to the county, we're going to give it up to the state, we're going to farm it out, no, we're going to rebuild another sewer plant in another place. Wha, wha, when are we going to know exactly why rates are affected with bonding, which is what this is about? And are we being bonded more and more to save up for eventually building or farming out a sewer system which will be more expensive? Is it any of those two?
Mr. McNolli, this has nothing to do with bonding. Again, it's a simple resolution.
He just said the rates are going up because of bonding. Hey Mayor Moore, why don't you just sit back and let me, I'm not asking anything out of order. You don't bother other people, Mayor Moore. Why don't you bother Mr. Harris on the zoning board when he jumps in and starts going after citizens? You won't call him out of order.
Uh.
Really, you got some nerve there. And that's why I would never.
I'm going to give you one chance to ask a question about the new sewer rate schedule for connection fees for the city of Asbury Park. And just say, Lisa Melody, mute Mr. McNolli immediately.
Mr. McNolli, do you have a question?
So, Mr. Expert, are the increase, and you said part of its debt service and bonding, in the overall picture, are we looking down the road, something that you would have to be aware of financially? Are we looking at the possibility of farming out the system, which would affect the rates? So I am asking about the rate, but I just want to know.
Okay, yeah, I can answer that. I can answer that.
Thank you.
All the service that the city repaid that factored into my calculations was for the existing collection system and treatment plant, not for any future moves of the plant or anything like that. It's just for the plant and the collection that's there now.
That exists. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. No further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Raffetto, Mr. Kaplan, I see no hands raised, no, oh, wait a minute, I just got one. I'm calling upon 4860. Please state your name and address for the record. 4860, star six to unmute yourself.
It's star six. Melody?
Yes, Maureen.
Yes, hi.
Maureen, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, it's Maureen Nevin, 3 Del Lake Court, Asbury Park. My question is, is this sewer topic connected at all with the audit report about the city's failure to impose the new rates?
Yes.
Okay, so my question then is, at what point should they have been billed? You know, should these larger customers have been billed? And what kind of monies were lost? Whether it was actual collections for that period of time or interest that we would have made on that money had it been paid on time?
Okay, so every, good question. So everyone that should have paid a connection fee to the city, paid a connection fee to the city. It's the incremental $441 that the city could have enjoyed one year ago that they didn't enjoy on those people that paid during the last, say, 12 months. I can't quantify what that number is, but I don't think it's material.
So the $441 was, is an average of what? Where did that come from?
That's the fee that was established in the last sewer connection fee rate hearing versus the fee that was established this evening.
And that was timed, we would look at that in what way? We would multiply that time, the number of sewer connections, sorry?
Yes.
I'm not hearing your replies. It sounds like a kind of clipped off.
Yes, your premise is correct.
Okay, so is the $441 each customer?
Yes.
And, but we don't know how many customers were affected? How many lines or connections? How, are you going to do that next? Are you going to compute that next?
No, that's not part of this.
What was that?
That is not part of this exercise. This exercise is to determine the new connection fee rate, period.
Oh, so we don't know the other number to put into that equation yet?
No. To answer your question, no. No one's asked to do that and that's not part of this exercise.
Okay, so I guess the other part of that is for Mayor Moore to answer whether, what the city is going to do to make up for that money, to make sure that they are billing later. The actual larger users, weren't there several large projects that were built in this period of time? Or went online?
I'm unable to answer that at this time. That's not a topic of this hearing. This hearing is to determine the rate for the connection fees now.
Okay, so I'm going to assume that that will happen down the line then.
Does that complete your comments, Maureen?
Yeah, I do think it's still, it's still, you know, germane to the topic to ask what is going to happen next on the part of the city to figure out how many connections were made during that time. And once they have the rate to figure it out with the newer rate. I mean, I'd like to hear that the city is going to make sure that they bill for that, to these, is unbilled.
Okay, Maureen, I'm sorry to interrupt you. If you want to keep, it's John Moore.
Yeah.
I think what you're saying is, and I kind of agree with you, you're saying like the city should have done this last year and it didn't do it and that's why it came up in the audit report and is being done now. And I don't think it would be legal to go after somebody for something that's being done retroactively. And again, I'm not a lawyer and we'll let Fred and Dave look into that part of it. Again, that's kind of like strained from this resolution, but I understand your question and you're absolutely right. And that's why it came up during the audit report. Somehow this slipped through with the past administrator that this wasn't done last year in a timely fashion and where Mr. Kaplan and Wissin Company picked up on it and said, hey, guys, you should have done this last year and it wasn't done. But to go after people retroactively, I'm not going to get into that tonight. I'll let, you know.
Well, it depends. It depends on, I just, I want to make sure that I've said this because if, for example, this didn't, this price increase didn't affect the Asbury Beach Club, that would be a lot of connections. That'd be a lot of money.
It could have been, and I'm not sure.
And if this was supposed to be done last year and it wasn't?
But the Asbury Beach Club, I believe, and again, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I believe the Asbury Beach Club, like the sewer rates were done three years ago when they were at the proper rates. You know, it wasn't like, you know, it took them three years to build it. I believe those numbers, Maureen, I'm shooting from the hip, I believe those numbers were done many years ago and were in order. Did we miss a year?
I agree. Mayor, I'd like to chime in and say I agree with that. I don't think, Maureen, I don't think the Asbury Beach Club paid a discounted fee because of this. They paid the fee that was required at that time and would not have been subject to this.
Well, I would expect as a taxpayer, and you know, as the press I do represent the taxpayers, that we would get not an assumption, but actual numbers. Actual numbers on the connection fees that will be adopted now and who should have been paying those higher fees and how much they amount to for the public.
Sure.
That's my comment on that and I would hope to see that.
I agree with you and we'll work on those numbers.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Mr. Raffetto and Mr. Kaplan, not seeing any other hands raised, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the establishment of the new sewer rate schedule. Do I have a motion to close?
More.
Do I have a second?
Second, Chapman.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
Now, at this point, do any members of the city council have any questions for Mr. Kaplan before we move on to taking a vote on Resolution Number 2020-290, which would set the new sewer connection fees?
No.
No.
Okay, then, Melody, we can move on to Resolution 2020-290 at this point.
Thank you. We have Resolution 2020-290, a resolution establishing a new sewer rate schedule, connection fees for the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Do I have a second? We'll now move on to roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are now on to adjournment. Are there any additional comments or questions before we move on to adjournment?
Move adjournment, Moore.
Second.
Second, Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.